Okay, let's uh make sure everything's turned off. Is that twenty bucks too? I can't remember. All right, um, Madam Clerk, we're gonna get rolling here. John's doing the invocation, Jim's doing the pledge. If you wish to join us, please rise.
Would you please bow with me? Father God, we come to you today with humble hearts. We come to you today with contract hearts. We know that you're here with us. We know that you're ever-present. We ask, Father, that you come into our hearts, come into our minds, and make decisions that are good and pleasing to you. This is your land. This is your county. We are your people. We offer everything up to you and ask only that we make decisions that are good and pleasing to you. We ask all this in Jesus' precious name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is making her way in. There she is.
Please call the roll.
Bell.
Here.
Here.
Freely.
Present.
Harrison.
Here.
Ekelman.
Here.
Jared.
Here.
Here.
Pitchford.
Here.
Volrath.
Here.
Purple.
Yarborough.
Here. Thank you. We have minutes from a week ago. Haven't heard of any changes to those minutes. Is there a motion to approve moved by Volrath? Is there a second? Seconded by Pitchford. Volrath and Pitchford, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those minutes are approved. Madam Clerk, have we any communication this week? Okay. We have these conflict of interest forms that are an annual routine for us. We'll just go around the horn and give you a chance to state for the record if you have anything. John, we'll start with you.
Real quickly, I don't have any conflicts of interest that I know of in anything other than years ago, not lately, but years ago, we take that shoulder scrapings that the department got. We had that discussion before. And sometimes the road department comes along and they need a place to dump that. We're handy. They put it on our property. And so I disclose that again. It's on there. And although we haven't done that in years, but it's on there, so.
Thank you.
Um, I guess the only thing I have is I'm a board member for the Avenue Family Network. And I know that this board has a grant that they give the I forget what it's called. The, it's a grant for the the elderly. I forget what the grant is, but we, we have a grant that we give them. And so I'd just like to disclose that I'm a board member for the Avenue Family Network.
Sorry, I was just disclosing the fact that I'm a board member for the family, the Avenue Family Network, and this board gives a grant to them on a yearly basis. And so I was just disclosing that fact.
Thank you.
I have my son employed by Green Earth Electronics Recycling. So we have a contract through the Parks Department with them. I'm a board member of the Barien Community Foundation. And then I'm Health Committee Chair for the Pokégan Band of Potawatomi. And then my brother-in-law is a volunteer driver for the Veterans Program.
No real conflicts of interest. On my end, I just put down that I am the co-chair of ALPACT, which we just work around, you know, place and community trust. And I just put that out of an abundance of caution, not knowing what may come up in that relationship with the county.
I am not a township supervisor, so I have no conflicts. I have no conflicts that I'm aware of.
My dad owns and operates Larry F. Escavating and Trucking, which does work on occasion for the Drain Commission, Road Commission. So just wanted to put that out there as well.
Okay, thank you. So Drain Commission and the Road Department?
Road Department.
Okay, thank you.
My brother rents a space from the County Three Oaks Building. That's all I know. I was just reading.
My conflicts that I have disclosed in the past have not changed. It's a potential conflict. As you know, in 2019, my husband owned a company called Borota Valley Farms. And in September of 2020, I took over all of the interests of that company and continued to operate it. In the past, Borota Valley Farms had done business renting equipment to a company called Rev Excavation. And that equipment sometimes may have been used for county drain projects and other county projects. And so therefore, out of an abundance of caution, I disclose that potential conflict and abstain when necessary. Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't think I had any conflict, but I heard Commissioner Harrison said he was a member of the Barien Foundation. And I am too, just by name or something. So I'm a member of the Barien Community Foundation. Do I write that on here?
We're good. I don't think it's necessary.
Okay, thank you. I have no conflict.
Hearing on the side of caution, then I'm part of the Michigan Gateway Community Foundation, but I don't think it has anything to do with what we do here. Otherwise, no conflicts. I don't think that is either, but when in doubt, put it out there.
Oh, that's right.
Okay. So where are we now? Meeting calendar for '23. Anybody have any thoughts on where, when? We've got the proposed list here for you. Is it good to go, or do we need to change it?
The night ones we don't, we're gonna go yet.
Yeah, yeah, we'll plug those in as spring draws near.
Okay.
Hopefully, spring will draw near sooner rather than later. But otherwise, is it, is it good for now? Is there a motion to approve it? Moved by Pitchford, supported by Volrath, to approve the tentative 2023 meeting calendar. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That meeting calendar is approved.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir.
When are we gonna have the discussion on the night meetings and when will they be assigned? I'm asking for a couple of different reasons. One, I have an opinion. And the second is I think it's easier on staff if they know ahead of time.
So the sooner, the sooner we can declare, the better. Well, when, what's your opinion and when would you like to do it?
Well, I found it very helpful. When I was first elected, we had a night meeting down in Niles Township. So I think because we have two new commissioners, that we have two night meetings and one in Commissioner Pitchford's area and one in Commissioner Ott's area, and that's it. To showcase them. That would take care of this year anyway. Next year, we can talk about it again. I'm opposed to a number of night meetings. I'm not sure they're productive. And I know it's an extra strain on the staff. So that's why I would limit them. And as much as I appreciate Melissa Clapper's opinions.
Mine is
in direct conflict with hers. But that, that's just my opinion. So for this year, I would recommend to let the two commissioners put them in their area. And that's it.
Dave.
I would agree with Jim's on one side. I was, or it was funny, but two, I would just go for it also, because I, I don't think we get as much done on the night, days of the night meetings. We just don't.
Yeah. Anybody else while we're on it?
Well, the point of a night meeting is what, just to get our faces out there? I mean, I go, and I'm sure he does too, the, the meetings for the township, the cities already. I mean, so I guess what's the, the point of a night meeting is, we do the same business, correct? Just, it's a night meeting.
We can't do all, all the meetings.
Well, we have traditionally done our committee meetings. Did you have something?
Yeah, after everybody, I just want to make sure that we don't disinclude MSU.
Right.
From the, from the thought process. MSU is one that
Yeah, we've gone there every year since General Grant was a corporal, basically. I mean, it's been a long time.
Yeah, I just don't, so. I would like to see that relationship continue. And you could do a morning meeting out there. I don't know, but, but the fact of the matter is, is that, that I don't want to see MSU. It's always a pretty easy one to organize.
Right. And they have good food.
Healthy.
Yeah. Okay, yes, ma'am.
I'd like for us to continue doing the night meetings. I like it. We get to see buildings and, you know, in Three Oaks, that was just, that building was awesome. And it's sad that we don't have good attendance, because people are saying, well, you should do a different time, and we do. And people come when they have a complaint, but mostly when they don't have anything to fuss at us about, they don't come. But we're there. We're doing it. So the opportunity for them to come is there.
Then Terry.
So I think the other consideration is the ability to post it to the YouTube channel, which in some of the locations, it really does not exist. And so, you know, we might want to consider having one night meeting here, which would minimize or reduce the, you know, the stuff, the burden on the staff and still allow us to stream it out. And then give an access point for individuals that can't make the day meeting. So that might be something to consider.
If, if we did that, we would probably want to schedule committee meetings during regular business hours, so that people who report to the board wouldn't have to stay after five o'clock to do it. Ma'am.
Um, only just point of order in our bylaws, I believe we approved five night meetings in, in the bylaw.
Do we say five or up to?
I would have to go back and review it, but I think that it states five.
Okay.
So we removed.
Was it removed?
Yes, because I questioned that. And I, and I talked to Annette. That's why I approved the bylaws, because I was gonna question that of designating five. Here's discretion as to how many you want to have.
Okay. Yeah, the bylaws now just say when night meetings are scheduled there to be held at 6:00 PM. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, because I, I appreciate the clarification, because I thought we had put up two in there, because, you know, that's that lawyer thing. You like to build in some flexibility. Because up two means anywhere from zero to five. All right, well, let's plan on getting into this sometime in February, then. That should give us plenty of time. I mean, just for my part, I like Well, on that, the calendar is approved for now, and we'll defer setting night meetings for another month or so. Public comments regarding resolutions. We don't have any added resolutions that I'm aware of. No one has brought anything in to revise the agenda, to add any resolutions. So looks like just the consent calendar is submitted. Is that correct, Chair? Sir.
I, I think we missed, we missed the board appointments that you
Sorry. Yeah, I had a check mark here to remind me. Good thing, good thing I put that check mark there. You all have those in hand. If we need to tweak them in the next week or two, we can. But for now, those would be the appointments. And again, it's not in a tablet brought down from high up in the mountain. We can modify these. Okay? And there's more than ten anyway, so. All right, now. One check for check. Public comments on the resolutions. Yes, sir. Name and town, if you would.
Michael Haskins, Pipestone Township. I'm looking at Resolution P. 117. Use, talking about the beach wheelchair or chairs. They use the term interchangeably. Is the purpose, and I realize this is rhetorical, to purchase one beach wheelchair when all of them are disrepair? Or is this to replace all of them? Thank you.
Anybody want to take a stab at that? Because I don't know. Yes, ma'am.
Have they got money to do it? Do you know about the wheelchair? Have you seen it? It's when you first come into parks, it's sitting there, if it's available. We have a couple already. And they have big tires. It rolls, it rolls over the sand. You can roll a person down, you know, to the water and all. We have that at Toba Beach. It's not at it's not at Rocky Gap. At Rocky Gap, we have a rug. I'm saying that, but something that we put down on the sand, so that when you park up here, you can roll the wheelchair all the way to the, to the lake.
Without getting stuck.
Yeah, without getting stuck. But they're big wheels. So I don't know if, if it's an additional one or to replace something that needed work.
And Michael, the last paragraph of the resolution is the operative part of it, where it says, now therefore be it hereby resolved. That tells you what it's doing. And it says it's going to Barien Community Foundation to pay for one chair. Well, hopefully, we'll be repaired by the time spring gets here. But this is to get one more.
Yeah, addition.
Any other questions about resolutions? Oh, okay. Then a motion would be in order to approve the consent calendar as submitted.
I'll make the motion.
Moved by Curran, supported by Harrison. Any discussion? Curran and Harrison, move and support. Madam Clerk, when you're ready, would you please call the roll?
Curran?
Yes.
Freely, yes. Harrison?
Yes.
Ekelman?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Uh, yeah. Pitchford?
Yes.
Volrath?
Yes.
Yarborough?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Lavenier's, Noné's, one absent.
Thank you. We'll do committee reports. Madam Chair of Finance, would you like to get us going?
Yes. We met today with our finance director, Doug James, and we're still working on policies and all trying to get things that come up, the questions answered, and know the proper process. We spent a good time with that. Dan Fetti sat in with us on the different things. Then we had a reports from Dan Fetti regarding our Barien bus.
Oh, great tale.
Yes, we're talking about
Can you elaborate on that, how that went?
Yes, it went very well. And Dennis Shue is, is working with us. He was a former director. And there were things we're working on with the City of Niles and Buchanan, Barien, or Buchanan bus was with Barien bus. And now they're with Niles. And Jim Curran happened to be in at that time. And we got to, you know, hear his opinion about how things are working. And with the, we received reports, and Barien bus is doing well. The ridership has gone up. We have nine drivers. We have two and a half new dispatchers. And so it's, it has dollars. We have money that is coming in. And like I said, they said the hours are going up for the ridership.
Yes.
And we're able to handle that. Then we had two waivers. One was, both of these are regarding the road department from a company called Tapco. They do radar traffic collector. And then the other one is from Avon Marsh for design and construction for road building. Any other things you can think of? That's mine.
Thank you. Any questions for Finance? Hearing none, then. Mr. Hearing none then, Mr. Chair of Personnel and Human Services.
Oh, oh, excuse me. We have a number of resolutions we'll be bringing uh next week for your uh approval.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we also met this morning. Uh, we had Jill Adams come in and give her update. Uh, she highlighted a couple of the, the activities um regarding this, this um our various parks. So we're look, she talked about road trip for the Parks Commissioners and she will extend the invitation to our county commissioners to go along and visit the various parks um that we operate. Um, she also gave us an update on the various grants that we've applied for to support you know, Silver Beach as well as um the Water Elite Parks. And then um we'll just have to wait and see if we get funded for those. Um, we did have a lengthy discussion about the Silver Beach concession agreement and that's going to expire in September of this year. So we talked through several options that we, that both us as well as the Parks Commission thought would be appropriate. And she'll be following up with our corporate counsel on those. So the, we also had um our chairman of our board come in and talk about the board appointments. And so that that we've already taken action on that. And then we will have for your next, next meeting um a renewal of an agreement with uh um the Silver Beach Pavilion and the county regarding overflow parking for both organizations. So that's basically just a renewal. And then um next week at the Committee of the Whole, we'll conduct our evaluation of the administrator and our corporate counsel. Those will both be in closed session. And so I will have the summary of the evaluations that the commissioners completed um sent to you and, and we'll go over those in some fashion with each of the individuals. And that would conclude my report.
Questions for P H S?
Mr. Admin Chair?
Thank you, Mac. Um, Dave, do you by chance still have your handout from the Road Department? If you would pass that along so the commissioners can at least see it when I get to that point, we see we'll have an opportunity to see what I'm talking about. First in to see us this morning was Caitlin Locke, uh, the interim chief public defender. She talked about personnel, obviously. Um, they're down uh five attorneys right now. Most of those attorneys are attorneys who we have hired, trained, and now they are pretty much going back to their home county uh to work in uh their engine at their public defender offices where they, uh, where they want to end up. Has one social worker and one investigator position still open. Uh, she commended the staff that they're getting the job done despite being uh shorthanded. Uh, she said that standard eight, uh, M I D C standard eight uh went into effect October twenty eighth of twenty twenty-two. This is uh the pay compensation for uh contracted uh attorneys. Uh, M I D C standard eight sets the rate on which we will pay those folks. So that is in effect. And there's about fourteen or fifteen uh different attorneys on that, that contracted basis. Talked about the social work department. Uh, they're staying extremely busy. And she did apply for the position and she's looking forward to uh that process of filling that position. Uh, next in to see us was Mark Heliger from the Road Department. And the handout that I have for you explains what he uh brought to us. It's just uh more for informational. It's, it's not for our approval. Uh, basically what it is, they are, they are acquiring uh point zero one two nine. I'm sorry, zero point one two nine of an acre of land. This is on Snow Road near Red Bud Trail and there is an S curve there. And if you, if you know that area, there's a, yeah, there's a steep hill, S curve. What this is going to do is smoothen out the curve, the S curve. They're not going to eliminate it because they can't because in this, if you look at the picture in the upper right, that area off to the right is swamp. So they really can't go too far in either direction because of the uh, the environment. So it's intended to smooth out the S curve. It's a privately owned property that uh Mark said would probably be acquired for about thirty-five hundred dollars. And that will help in that area for uh trucks, accidents, everything. So um I wanted the board to be fully aware of that as well. And we uh, you know, we didn't need to give our permission, but we did. We concurred. That sounds like a good idea. Next, uh, we have resolutions for you. Next time we get together, resolution ending in one one two seven. Max, the K nine from the Sheriff's Department is retired and this will allow us to uh give Max to the handler Lieutenant Tom Dyer for the sum of one dollar. We've done that in the past. It just makes a lot of sense. And if you watch the news lately, you'll see that the Cass County had their K nine retired and had a nice, nice ceremony. Um, traditionally, that's what they do is they uh sell the animal back to the handler for them to keep. Uh, next three resolutions ending in twenty-nine, thirty and thirty-one. These are all renewable contracts from the uh Trial Court Family Division. Uh, twenty-nine is to uh contract with parenting with love and limits diversion reentry program. This is for up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Fifty percent reimbursement from the Child Care Fund. And this is to serve up to fifty-five youth per year uh to best meet the needs of families in the most effective and comprehensive manner. It is a one-year contract from January one of twenty-three to December thirty-one of twenty-three. It will be billed at twenty thousand eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents per month. Resolution ending in thirty is to uh contract with the STAR program. Uh, this is through the Family Empowerment Services. It is allocate resources up to two hundred and thirty thousand eight hundred and eighty-six. This is to serve up to eighteen youth per year uh that best meets the needs of families in the most effective and comprehensive manner. Resolution ending in thirty-one is a contract between uh Family Empowerment Services. This is uh allocating up to sixty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars. This is an agreement between the Marion County Trial Court Family Division and Family Empowerment Services uh to implement the juvenile pre-arrest diversion program. So you will see those resolutions the next time we get together. We signed a uh Sheriff's Department uh distribution form through the Marion Community Foundation uh for forty-six hundred dollars. And it is for the Special Olympics polar plunge. We approved our minutes and that's our report.
Very good. Questions for Admin? Okay, Commissioner Reports. John, you want to get, get us started?
Um, I attended the uh Twin Cats meeting. Um, and one concern is what's going on at Takata. Um, I believe their director was just reinstated after a uh brief uh suspension and we're just trying to figure out what that suspension was for. And um there's still that issue of uh some of the apartment buildings and senior living um buildings. They're being, uh, they're being placed out of those units for um building reconstruction. And so there's a need for transportation for those people living in those units. Um, and Takata is not able to provide that transportation. So we're trying to work out how to provide that transportation for them. Um, I also attended the um the Mental Health Authority uh Board Meeting with Commissioner Majerick. And it was a good discussion on um just how to implement some of the uh strategies, how to get feedback from staff and um how to best provide them with the tools they need to serve um the people in the community regarding uh mental health. I also attended the Community Corrections Advisory Board Meeting and one of the uh noteworthy things discussed there was K P E P numbers are down and that's due to staffing shortage, which isn't uh specific to Marion County, but also across the state of Michigan. Um, they're facing that issue. And so um, we're trying to work out just how to um get our staffing numbers up to be able to uh fill those uh vacancies where they exist regarding residency um in juvenile centers as well as uh the jails across the state of Michigan and here in Marion County. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you. No report?
No report.
No report. No report. Well, just to expand on mental health. Out of eighty-three counties in Michigan, uh forty-six of them are covered by C M Hs and ten P I H P Ss. Since nineteen ninety-seven, Michigan has remained the only state in the nation that provides publicly managed care for all major population, adults, mental health, children and adolescents. Ninety-one percent of uh the C M H's budget is from Medicaid and Healthy Michigan Plan. Uh, the uh, let's see. It's a three billion dollar industry and uh it's served by, employed by over a hundred thousand people. Ninety-four of this amount that's spent on the people goes directly to actual care. They are open twenty-four seven uh for mental health people, anybody that's got any issues uh out of the two million people that we serve. And seventy thousand of them are substance abuse with uh opioid epidemic information or problems. That's all.
Terry?
Um, I have no report on any committees, but I do want to make the board aware and the public aware that the Michigan High Speed Internet Office, or we like to call it the My High Office, is actually hosting a listening tour as it relates to broadband and connectivity. And they will be coming to Benton Harbor Tuesday, February fourteenth at L M C between two and four P M. So if you have any citizens who have reached out to you as it relates to broadband connectivity, their personal story, what um the My High Office is asking is that we encourage them to attend this meeting to share their story as the state figures out how to prioritize the estimated one point six billion dollars that will be prioritized as it relates to infrastructure and broadband. Um, so again, that is Tuesday, February fourteenth at L M C between two and four P M. Uh, we'll show some love to broadband on Valentine's Day. See what I did there, Mr. Chair? Thank you. Uh, and then the other thing that I just. Yes, a hallmark moment. Uh, the other thing that I just want to bring to the attention, I know we've spoke um quite a bit on um the Robin Grant. And I guess we did have a B C Bit meeting last Thursday, so just kind of rolled into that. Um, and stating that that would be um rolled out and announced from the state for funding. And it did get announced last Thursday. So now legislatively, we have sixty days um for an I S P to either apply for that grant or local municipalities to apply for that grant. Um, so B C Bit is working with our contracted consultants and staff to figure out the best direction to head for, for the county and put forth a good effort to get a grant application put together and get us finally connected. So that's my report.
Niles has municipal utilities.
They do.
Mitchell Walker does. I think there may be some other cities that provide their own electric utilities. Have any of those talked about becoming an internet service provider?
So Niles currently is an internet service provider as well. They do have their own internet there. Uh, so there's a lot of legislative sort of hoops that would have to be jumped through. What we've seen from the B, B C Bit perspective is partnering with those I S Ps that are willing to apply because the way that the Robin Grant is written is it is more geared toward the I S Ps being the ones that apply for this. And only if there are gaps of service that there is no I S P willing to apply that we then um or a municipality could have the right to apply for that and construct.
Okay.
Is that correct, Fatty, as from what you'd reviewed as well?
Yes.
Thank you.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am.
Yes, thank you. Uh, yesterday we had our Parks Commission meeting and the, the, the report I was hearing from you with the things that we talked about and discussed. And one of them was the um uh current concession at um Silver Beach. We'd like very much to keep them for an additional two to five years. It is expiring September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Um, they've been extremely satisfied with the person that's running it, uh that it's always open and she's trying to ex- expand or she hears people say they need things. So it's more than just food. They do um rent chairs, uh they have umbrellas, uh just a number of things. And so um our uh Parks Board wants to continue with her for this uh period, not knowing when the, all the beautiful drawings we see when that's going to happen. But then that, we would do that, you know, completely inviting other people in, but we need the continuity and to know that it can continue. And she's, each year has done something to upgrade or make it wider or whatever was needed. And so there are, uh, it's great. How they have each director of each property come and they make a a report on what they're doing. Um, at Love Creek, uh, they, they do something where you can hunt deer. Is it with a bow and arrow?
I think it might be.
Anyway, they got two deers this time and then they had one other deer. I don't know if they ran over it or what happened, but it came into Love Creek. And that's not funny. Well, yeah. Um, this deer was so large, the, the people came in to, you know, trying to follow it, I guess, and catch it that they had to cut it, cut it in two. They couldn't move it, you know, uh by one. And so just interesting things. They've been having a bu- a bird count for sixty-two years. And um it's around Christmas time or whatever. And so they continue to do that. Uh, Madeline Bertrand, uh, I think made a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. That's without much snow. So there is a real need and uh, uh, people enjoy doing the things. And then they talked about the hazardous uh waste that they're collecting and picking up. It's just very interesting, the things that they do and the people that work for them. Um, the majority of the parks are closed. The Paw Paw River Water Elite is closed, Rocky Gap is closed, Silver Beach. Uh, you can still, you know, go there, but um the, on the gate that, none of that is happening now. But Love Creek and um Madeline Bertrand Park are the ones that are still open. And so that's mine.
Thank you. We won't have an administrator's report today. So we'll move right into general public comments. Anything under the sun in two minutes or less? Name and town.
I'm Melissa Clapper, St. Joseph Charter Township. I'll just repeat myself. I think night meetings are extremely important. Um, I wish we could expand the night meetings to include more discussion. Um, if I had to make a choice, if forced to make a choice between traveling for night meetings and having a night meeting that was consistently to be held here, that would help, you know, ease coming the strain. And as much as I like to travel around too and see different places because traveling from one end of the county to the other would, for some people, it's um extremely difficult. For others, it's appears to be difficult. But um I would say that we'd have one here, that we, we'd have this to be able to stream it, et cetera. But um I think we should have more. There's one, two, three of us, not counting the people that work here, four, that come regularly. And um it's really kind of sad because there's a lot going on. And it's really kind of sad because there's a lot going on in the county. So thanks, Jim, for acknowledging me.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wish to be heard? Yes, sir?
Belzer Hager Township. Now I want to know why that water fountain is now working. I complained about that before. I wonder, a couple of them upstairs, I wonder if they're working. You know, people come in here, the first thing you do is probably get it, get some water, right? Press the button, nothing comes out. How, what kind of impression does that give you guys? You can't even keep a fountain running. And you're running a whole county? Unbelievable. Now, another thing I want. Those mics do not work. No, you guys are talking back and forth to each other. Now I'll tell you what the problem is. I already showed that once before. The setup right here, I, I suggest you two, two people come over right here and make a circle. Excluding all, you know, there are only three of us in here. I've complained about this before. Now, what I want, I want to know who I can go to to complain about this setup. Somebody give me a name. You guys are, you guys think you're God or something, right? The buck, buck stops here. I want to see a change. This is a classroom, a kindergarten classroom, right? What, what are we, kindergartners? You know, they weigh about 30 pounds, 40 pounds, multiply that times 20, so you got about, what, 400 pounds? What do we got in here? Couple thousand pounds, some of this classroom's for. Now, I want a name or an organization I can go to to complain about this. This is ridiculous. Showed you that before, but you guys don't want to listen to me. Think I'm just funny because I got this beard, right? By the way, it stopped growing right here. It doesn't get any longer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Belzer. Yes, sir.
Matt Kirk is New Buffalo. You could run your mics through a PA. Illinois is criminalizing gun owners and 80 out of 102 sheriffs agree not to comply. Weather disasters continue displacing our neighbors made worse by state as, as, by the state, as rebuilding is virtually impossible under modern requirements. I wrote a paper here proving that they will target minors for genital mutilation after Prop 3. I predict they will first trespass upon local children, then they will go to court if they get caught. Certainly your prosecuting attorney won't defy the woke agenda, agenda, nor will you take preemptive action. Then finally, the biased court can decide what we already know, that the state will defend the state against parents. Soon we will hear more excuses for pedophilia. Age is subjective. Children have individual rights to consent. Sports betting is yet another method to subject our weak-minded neighbors by some jurisdictions, but some jurisdictions have found creative ways to combat this, such as banning celebrity endorsements. Weed is marketed to minors and I already made it clear to you that you're complicit in federal crime by allowing it. We simply wanted the state to stop prosecuting victimless crimes. Yet you and your police pick and choose what laws you will enforce based on the globalist agenda as Whitmer now attends Davos. Why can't we defy the feds when I want to camp on my property? I asked you to find a way to permit us to access our property without state intervention. Many laws exist criminalizing homelessness, yet you ban me from sleeping on my own property. There are many people who would park RVs on their land if they could. You don't have the courage to limit the health department. You allowed police to bully local businesses during lockdowns. You couldn't even stop the health department from suffocating children. Our neighbors have given up. They are drug addicts, porn addicts, now gamblers, profit status seekers. They are also your neighbors and you will also get the government you deserve. Is this the clerk here?
No.
No. Can I, I'm going to, I can't email.
Set it there, sir. It's right there. Thank you. All right, thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? All right, that concludes, Bob, general public comments. We'll go to other business. Anybody have any? Announcements and reminders. I don't see any on here. Sir?
Just one announcement. Carrie Spatek, our first administrator, wanted me to extend the invitation. Paul Gant is being sworn in.
Yeah, I just wanted to announce that Paul Gant is being sworn in today at 3:30 at the courthouse and she wanted to extend that invitation for all of our commissioners, including our new ones, commissioners in Pittsburgh.
Okay. Thank you very much. 11:21, we stand adjourned to 8:35 next week.